Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
I'm taking note of the fact that it's 6:34 PM. The Wyndham Northeast Supervised Reunion Board will come to order. Adjustments to the agenda, Superintendent Pratt?
It's not an adjustment. I just wanted to call to the public and the board's attention. If you would like to have the closed caption on your screen, if you go to the bottom where it says live transcripts, you can go where it says enable transcripts, and then you'll be able to have the closed caption on your screen. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I have, I have two adjustments, and I see your hand up, Priscilla. Did you have an adjustment, Priscilla? Oh, okay. All right. Two adjustments. 7A, which is under Old Unfinished Business, that's a proposal for District Wide Finance Committee. Would like to move that up immediately after adjustments here and before communication and public comment. My assumption is that possibly the public may want to comment on that when we get done with it. The other item is, interestingly enough, 7B, which is a late-breaking addition to the agenda, and that's a negotiations update for executive session. Chris, are you aware of any others?
No, I do, I do not have any others or aware of any others.
I see Priscilla's hand up, David.
Priscilla, I see your hand. Thank you.
I just had a question. We approved the teachers last time, but we did not approve the licensed ones, the other licensed ones that were on there last time. And my understanding was they were supposed to come up at another meeting, and they're not on this one. So is that a future meeting, or where are we at on that?
When you refer to licensed professionals, Priscilla, are you talking about licensed professionals under the CBA collective bargaining agreement? Are you talking about licensed professionals who are staffers who are working for central administration?
Yeah, those.
Got an answer for us, Chris?
I know right now, as the HR office continues to send out contracts, we're in stages right now. So if we have to come together to approve further contracts at the SU level, I will put out, I will meet with you, David, so we can come up with a plan of time to do that. But we're rolling out in stages. We want to get to the schools first before central office, administration, and educators.
What's your pleasure, Priscilla?
That, that was answering it, and it's going to be in the future. So that's fine.
Okay, great. I'm going to ask Chris if I can have the screen back so I can see members. And the question goes out to, are you, Jim, Mr. McCall, are you ready to present to us? And by the way, while Jim's getting set up here, I want to tell you what I'm looking for for an outcome of this discussion tonight. I'm hopeful that after Jim talks with us, and we may want to have some dialogue, that what we'll do in terms of taking action will be to, I'm hopeful that we will entertain a motion to direct the chair to appoint ad hoc committee to bring a proposal back this board for action. And if there's anyone who is uncertain about what's meant by ad hoc committee, it's Article 4 of the Supervised Reunion Bylaws. One of the roles of the chair is to appoint ad hoc committees from time to time as necessary. And this would be what I might refer to as a resolutions committee, such as when the Vermont House meets with the Senate to iron things out. And what I will be looking for, ideally, will be a couple of members who can sit down with Jim and Hardy Merrill, and so we can come back at a future meeting and say, this is what we think a finance committee should be doing for us. And that's in very specific language. Or it may come back and say, just forget about it. But somewhere between those two extremes on the continuum is where hopefully, I hope we'll end up in terms of our finance committee discussion the next time we meet, so that we can either move on with it or dispose of it and move on with the rest of our very lengthy agenda. So thank you for hearing me out. And Jim, you ready now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Talk to us, please.
Okay. I don't know, David, did you, did you share the memo that I sent to you and Chris Pratt?
I, I have not, but I, I did request that it get attached to the board packets. I have to confess, I don't know if it's in there or not. Maybe, Jim, if you could go over that again, it would be useful, because there will be people on this meeting who will be members of the public, be interested in what we're doing anyway.
Well, the, the, the purpose of the, of the committee, as, as we proposed, Hardy and I proposed, was to provide an analytical arm to the superintendent, superintendent's office and the boards that would basically provide data that I would assume would be helpful to the boards and the superintendent's office in, in their decision-making. The, the first, first job, if you will, of this committee, if it were to be formed, would, would be basically data mining. We would go back as, you know, a reasonable period of time, five years, maybe possibly 10 years, and put, just put together raw numbers. The, once, once the data is collected, then it can be brought to the present time and used to provide information. Obviously, it's, the focus is on people, students, teachers, support staff, administrators, et cetera, and, and to provide a historical perspective to the boards and to the superintendent's office in that manner. The data itself, I would say, would be, would be the, would be the province or be, be owned by the superintendent's office. Obviously, the committee would, would be working, hopefully, in conjunction with the boards and the superintendent's office. And so the data, once collected and perpetuated, would, would always be under the control of the superintendent. The, I can't imagine that the committee, the finance committee would ever participate in a budget hearing. The, I guess it's conceivable that, that one of the boards, Rockingham, or, or however you evolve, you know, the high school, et cetera, when you're doing your budgets, you, you might send out a request to the, to the committee for information. I would hope that you would. But clearly, the, I guess, the, the way to look at this is what the finance committee isn't. The finance committee isn't the accounting and reporting function of the school department. It's not the budget committees of, of the various boards, including the supervisory union. It's strictly a data collection and analysis of data that would hopefully be useful in things like, like budgeting, certainly, when budgets are considered, when proposals are coming from the state with regards to education funding. Clearly, that, the data, or the manipulation of the data might be very useful to the boards and the superintendent's office in, in being able to respond to, to the legislature at your various hearings, et cetera. So anyway, I'll stop at that. It's just, hopefully, that sheds a little bit of light on it and, and clarifies what, what it isn't. Unfortunately, Hardy was not able to come this evening, but at least thus far, we have a, a Grafton person and a Rockingham person that would be willing to serve on this committee. We did propose in that memo that the committee have six members, one non-board member who has a financial background from each of the four towns, and a representative of the supervisory union board chair and the superintendent's office. Obviously, that's just, you know, it, it's strictly a working group. But that would be my initial thoughts, or our initial thoughts, on, on how the committee would be comprised. But obviously, that's, that's flexible, and if your committee, yours, whatever you call your ad hoc committee, I'm sure they would look at that.
Thank you, Jim. I anticipate there might be a few questions, and I'm going to just anticipate that maybe Jack Brier might have one of those questions. Jack, if you want to start us off?
I appreciate that this is a, a, and we started out with the last time this was pitched, because the last time it was pitched was premised on the incompetence of our boards to do the oversight work that's part of the remit. I think there is a great need to have standardized accounting that, that non-school board types would understand. One of the things that, one of the few places, perhaps, that Jim and I agree completely is the fact that the, that, that traditional school accounting and business accounting don't seem to talk to each other very much because of the way that we account for money and money that's off books, and things like just an asset count of what we actually have in the way of assets, what we owe, money that comes in from, from non-taxpayer money tends to be a little fuzzy around the edges. And this is an area that needs help. This is an area that needs help, mostly, frankly, in terms of developing report formats, which is different than necessarily doing a, you know, a 10-year study to prove that, that the schools are spending too much money. That's a decision that the board has to make, but they might make it if they had better reporting. And they might even be able to figure out how to solve the problem rather than just be upset about it. That would be an area that I'd be interested in. I, I do caution, however, that this, that the SU board, while it is a, a board that we try to use to have discussions among the various constituent members, don't direct the constituent boards in terms of what they do and what they spend money on, or even the reports that they want. And I think that I'd love to see a, I'd love to see a more detailed proposal, perhaps. Jim's already got it, and have it taken to the constituent boards for feedback imposed by the SU on those constituent boards, especially now that we're soon to have yet another constituent board. I, I hope that doesn't feel like a, a pushback, because it's not intended to be one. But it is, you know, a caution that, again, this board and all the constituent boards have not just budget oversight. They have, it's right in the language of our, of our articles, they have financial oversight responsibilities. And I think that it would be helpful to have Jim and Hardy, who I trust implicitly, with some other folks, get together and lay out in some detail what those financial analysis tools are. And then, once they're understood and agreed to, we can determine whether that's something for the team, since it does require the, the software provider to develop them, to get them to do so, rather than have us kind of have folks poking about and trying to do this in an ad hoc fashion. I'm very, very aware of the limited number of staff we have at, in the SU, and very aware of how few people Flores' team has compared to most finance offices. And I want to make sure that we're not making work for them when we could be making work for e-finance, which I'm totally in favor of doing.
Thank you, Jack. Are there other questions from the board? I'm not hearing or seeing any at the moment. Yes, Cheryl, thank you. You're, you're recognized.
Thanks. So just one question. Actually, to a point that Jack just made, I think that the proposal for a motion, David Clark, that you suggested, was that there would be an appointment of an ad hoc committee to bring a proposal back to the chair. And I think such a proposal would detail what Jack was just recommending before anybody goes to the business office to ask for reports or data or anything like that. But my question to Jim was that I was actually a little bit surprised to hear you say that the focus would be on people. And I, and I just would like you to explain the rationale for that, please, given that there are other kinds of things that affect, even though that's the biggest part of what is related to our finances here. But just give us a little bit of a rationale for why that would be the focus, please.
Sure. The, well, you know, certainly, when you look at your, when you look at your budgets and your costs, it's, it's basically driven by people. And, you know, on the one hand, you've got your, you've got your students. And on the other hand, you have your, your teaching staff and your support staff and your administrators. So, so a lot of the historical data would deal with numbers of people in those various categories. The, the areas of, of inquiry, you know, for example, we haven't talked about this, but the, you know, there's, there's always discussions about, you know, capital budgets and, you know, planning in the future for, you know, building repairs and maintenance and those kinds of things. So certainly, there, there are other areas where a finance committee could, could provide some support for the, for the boards and the superintendent's office. But the, as I said, the, the drivers of your cost and the analysis of your, you know, in, in, in both, both in putting budgets together as well as responding to state boards in terms of how they're trying to address education costs really do get to, to people. So that's, that's the context.
Follow-up, Cheryl?
Just one thought that comes to mind. I do understand that. I'm, I'm reminded, as an example, though, of how much our district is now, our whole supervisory union is benefiting from the extraordinary talent of our assistant superintendent and superintendent in bringing in grant monies. And so I don't know. I would suggest to this committee, if it's formed, that one of the things you look at is the abundance of or lack of things like that that end up affecting program. Yes, they affect personnel, but it's not the narrow definition of what's the minimum of people that we would have. So there are a lot of considerations in trying to get a big sense of what the trends are, what the sources of income and expenses are. That's part of what I would hope that you all with this expertise would help us, help us with. And that's it for me. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Cheryl. I've had a hand up for a while from Jessa West Clark, whom I'm about to recognize. I also have a hand from Priscilla, and I believe that I have an insipid hand from Jack. And I'm hopeful that Jack can have the last word on this one, because I'm watching the clock. I would like to see if we can get done by a reasonable hour. So Jessa, you are recognized.
Thank you. One thing that I have, it's more of a comment about this, is that we have, I don't think in recent memory, but in past memory, a year ago, at least, we tried querying the state about development for the e-finance software, and we got nowhere. Currently, e-finance uses a third-party Cognos spreadsheet to present data, which is woefully inadequate. And I think the SU has also heard repeatedly my complaints about data analytics and data visualization especially, which is a much better way, there's far better ways we can present budgetary information to the public. As it is right now, you get these spreadsheets, which were used for data analytics 30 years ago. And unless you are intimately familiar with the way school budgeting and this bizarre software works, it is impossible to make sense of. I know our IT budget did not get a huge bump this year. But do you have, are you considering part of your proposal, what you're going to use for data analytics and data visualization? And maybe that's something that could come out of that more detailed proposal coming from the ad hoc committee?
I think you're queried, Jim. Do you have a response for Jessa West Clark?
No, I, I think the, you're, you're absolutely right. The issue of, of how the data would be stored and how it would be presented would, would have to be considered very carefully. You're not, we're not trying to build, you know, more, more complexity. But like you said, your existing system is, presents challenges. So it's, it's a, it's a question of trying to utilize and not duplicate the information you have and the means of displaying and presenting that information without creating a lot of extra work and time. So, you know, as the system improves, I think it will probably improve. It may be, it may become a lot easier to incorporate some of this analysis into those reports.
Thank you, Jim. Priscilla, I believe you had your hand up. I'm on a different screen right now. But Priscilla, you're recognized if you're here.
Yes. My concern is that, we talked about it at the last meeting, and we expressed that we needed some of the budget finance people that are on committees for, for example, the WNSU, which has from all of the different boards. But we need some of them on there, and you've once again come back and simply not included them in your proposal again tonight. So I'm just really concerned to make sure that you don't leave that out when you're, when you're, you know, doing a general proposal to, that we're supposed to look at.
Well, thank you, Priscilla. And ergo, my request that we have an ad hoc committee that will sit down and address these issues so we can come back to this board with a, with a well-vetted proposal. So your concerns were duly noted, Priscilla, at the last meeting, and they're also duly noted at this meeting. I appreciate you bringing them up again. Jack, I'm going to ask you for a question. I'd like to entertain a motion. It's a question or comment, Jack? Open-ended?
It's both. The, the issue here is I want to make sure that we're very clear on what it is we're proposing. I'm not. There are two different agendas here that I want to make sure we're clear about, because one I support strongly, one I oppose fairly fiercely. I think that processes and tools are something that would help the designated elected officials to help determine budgets with more crispness and make them more clear to the voters, because the last set of budgets we sent out to the voters were an embarrassment. That's one. But there's a second one. Jim knows that one time my consulting work used to be one of those guys that came in as part of a finance committee. And what they, what we were really tasked with was trimming 20% of the staff at places like Yellow Truck. It's actually where I got to meet my former Grafton board chair, because he worked for one of the companies that I riffed people at. And, well, he was one of the riffies. So it's something that I'm familiar with. We, I know that there's been, you know, an effort to prove that we overspend in the district. And Jim has some very strong views of that. If we're appointing a, a committee to recapitulate those issues, that's policy. That's something we own. No outside committee owns it, and I would, you know, oppose getting us into the weeds of that. However, I believe that Jim and Hardy and other members can absolutely develop more transparent tools that we can use, that the budget committees and other boards can use, that Flor and Chris can use to help them get a better handle on administrative stuff so that we're not having to try to figure out over and over again just how much money, say, is in the bond for Westminster School, which was a recent thing. That would be helpful. But no, no committee, no ad hoc committee should be thinking that they're going to take over budget functions and finance oversight functions of this board. They are the elected officials. They are responsible for that. If they're not doing their job, they need to be replaced by other elected officials. And I would, in some cases, that might be a good idea. The, the reality is, let's make certain that we don't essentially put into place a political process disguised as a technical advisory committee. And I want to make sure that we're very clear as we go forward, which one it is that we're doing. And Priscilla's point about the, the lack of, of budget chairs being involved in this process is a little worrisome to me. So I got.
Well, Jack, I appreciate your comments, and I'm hearing two things. One is I'm hearing an individual who might be willing to volunteer for work on an ad hoc committee to create a fuller proposal for this board to consider. And the other thing that I think I'm hearing here is an offer on your part to introduce a motion to direct the chair to appoint an ad hoc committee to bring a proposal back to this board for action. Is that a motion you would be comfortable making, Jack?
Well, I'm not an official member of this board.
Thank you for pulling that out.
And someone else for that.
You do such a great job here, Jack. We, 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 our members from the Union Elementary and we're darn close to that now. Okay, voting member tonight.
I will move to propose Jack's motion as a voting member, as stated.
Thank you, Jessa. Your motion is appreciated. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion. This is Deb Wright.
Deb has a motion for discussion. Just wanted to note these down. Okay. We are open for discussion under the motion. Is there discussion under the motion?
I have something.
Yes, please, Deb.
Not remember exactly what the, I don't remember seeing the document Mr. McCallum is referring to. However, in order to make this work, whether I'm opposed or for it, I would ask how a protocol would be set up to allow public members in an ad hoc committee to ask, to be asking the finance department, the business office, for specific pieces of data at different times. And recommending that perhaps one board member from the WNSU should be part of that ad hoc committee. I may have missed that if that was brought up already before, that in order to have a board member who would be delegated to get the materials available to board members, but not necessarily to the public, public for reporting matters.
Thank you, Deb. It's a great question. And I, and I think I should make an important distinction here. I'm looking for an ad hoc committee that will come back to this board with a proposal for a finance committee. The ad hoc committee would be very much temporary in nature. And one of the purposes, obviously, of this ad hoc committee would be to address the kind of questions which you've just raised here, Deb, because these are the sort of answers that we need to have ahead of creating a new committee of this board. And bluntly, Deb, this is one of the reasons that I've been slow-walking this committee proposal. It's easy to set up a committee. It's a lot harder to know what the committee's supposed to be doing and who's supposed to be on that committee. I'm looking for an ad hoc committee that will have those questions answered before we come back to this board with a proposal for a finance committee. And with regard to the- And with regard to the activity.
David, just a second. It can't be called finance committee. I mean, finance analysis might work because we already have a finance committee, a finance budget committee.
Okay, Priscilla, once again, that's, that's a great topic for an ad hoc committee to address. And that ad hoc committee will be tasked by the chair, should you approve it, to round up the questions from the board so that we have these answers and that there is a clear direction from an ad hoc committee as to what form. Would you call that committee again, please, Priscilla?
I called it because he said it was still be an analysis. I said finance analysis.
Thank you. Fin, fin, finance analysis committee. Okay, your, your concern is heard. And I'm hopeful that board members are hearing the chair saying that we need the questions so we can have the answers before we come back to you with a proposal. Okay, we're under discussion of a proposal to direct the chair to appoint an ad hoc committee to bring a proposal back to this board for action. Is there additional discussion under the motion? Anyone? All right, then I'm gonna roll call it. And I guess I will start at the high school. Deb, how do you vote? Deb Wright?
Aye.
Thank you. Brenda Farkas?
Aye.
Thanks, Brenda. Jason Terry?
Aye.
Priscilla Lambert? Okay, that's an aye, I believe. George Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Cheryl Charles?
Aye.
Thank you, Cheryl. Lynn Morgan?
Aye.
Thanks, Lynn. Jessa West Clark?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Jim, I will get, be getting a committee.
Molly, you need to call Molly.
We have, oh, Deb, you're right. I mean, Priscilla, you're right. Thank you so much. I forgot to write Molly. And Molly, I apologize for the oversight. How do you vote, Molly?
I'm not a voting member tonight.
Brenda then. Brenda.
Brenda did, Brenda did vote. I'm, I'm actually the third member. I don't customarily vote. And, you know, you caught me and caught me twice. Okay, thanks, Priscilla. This brings us, and Jim, thank you for the presentation. And I'll be getting with Chris Pratt to work on an ad hoc committee and I'll loop you in just as soon as Chris and I've had time to talk about this. We are all, all ready, all the way up to communication and public comment. And I want to thank all the patient members of the public who've been waiting for their opportunity. And this would be a great time if we could have some public participation. So, Chris, who do we have that would, would like to talk with us? Or talk to us, rather?
At this point, I do not have anyone, any quays in the chat or any hand raised in the participation window. So right now, you, there's no one from the public who wishes to address the board.
Well, one more, one more time, because I realize there are some members of the public out there. If you would like to address the board, this would be the time to do it. If you don't, then I'm gonna move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes of April fourteen. And I have a motion on those minutes, please. Lynn has the motion. Do I have a second on the minutes? And Cheryl has given me a second. All right. And any corrections to those minutes? All right, in that case, all of those in favor of approving those minutes, I will roll call you. Cheryl Charles?
Aye.
Thank you. Lynn Morgan?
Aye.
Jessa West Clark?
Aye.
Jason Terry?
Aye.
Priscilla Lambert?
Aye.
George Smith?
Aye.
Deb Wright?
Aye.
Brenda Farkas?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Reports, superintendent. Update on students returning to in-person learning five days a week. Chris Pratt, what can you tell us?
Well, I have, you know, I have a, quite a bit of things I wanted to address in my report, that being one of them. So if that's okay, I'd like just to go through my report.
Chris, do your report in any ass, in any order that you want to. I'm gonna bounce off camera just momentarily.
Thank you, sir. So to start off my report tonight, as you all, you know, probably heard, we have some tragic news that took place over the weekend. So on April twenty-fifth, I was informed by Principal Chris Hodgson the untimely death of a Bellas Falls Union High School tenth grade Jada Spalding Doyle. As a result of a car accident that took place on the weekend of April twenty-fifth. To say that our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family and friends during this very difficult time. Mr. Hodgson sent an email out to all B Bellas Falls Union High School school committee members on the night of April twenty-fifth. And I also forwarded this email out to all school committee members throughout WNESU. Mr. Hodgson sent and wrote the following. Jada was known and loved by so many students and adults in our community. We are grieving with that large group that dated touched. I know that there will be many students who will need support in processing this tragedy. On Monday, April twenty-sixth, we will have additional counselors at the school to help with the grieving process. Additionally, we know many students are best served in times like this with the distraction that a normal school routine can provide. So to serve as many of our grieving Bellas Falls Union High School families as possible, we'll run a school day with our regular class schedule, giving students every opportunity to meet as needed with our counseling staff. Mr. Hodgson further, further writes, I recognize that typically the best resource for supports of teenagers when they experience these types of tragedies begin with their family at home. Therefore, if any students are not able to or not ready to come to school, I simply ask that parents or guardians call the school to let the attendance office know of the absent and the reason for the absent. I further suggest that if parents or guardians decide that it is best for their child to stay at home, that parents ensure that the child has access to the necessary supports, comfort in their time of need. That's the letter that Mr. Hodgson sent out to the Bellas Falls community and I sent out to the, of the district. So our thoughts and prayers are with the family, friends, and, you know, everyone was part of Jada's life. So next up is the update on students returning to in-person learning. So we're excited to announce that, you know, that we started the week, April nineteenth, Westminster sent the school, Central Elementary School, Saxon's River Elementary School, and Athens Grafton School open to in-person instruction five days a week. It will no longer be holding any remote learning classes on Wednesdays. Currently, Saxon's River Elementary School has seventy students in person, five days a week, with seven remote learners. Grafton Elementary School has fifty-one students in person, five days a week, thirteen remote learners. Westminster Central School has one hundred and thirty-nine students in person, five days a week, and thirteen remote learners. In addition, the Bellas Falls Middle School and Bellas Falls High School will return to five days a week in-person learning on Monday, May tenth. Currently, Bellas Falls Middle School has a hundred and ninety-four students receiving four days a week of in-person instruction. And Bellas Falls Middle School has invited all students on the waiting list to return to in-person instruction now that the social distancing guidelines have been changed to three feet. Two families have chosen to, to have their child, two families have chosen to have their child's return. The principal and the superintendents would like to thank all students, staff, families, and board members for being patient and committed to the safety of the students this year. The support has allowed us to move forward continually. And we're excited to have students back in the building full-time. So moving on, and just so the board members know, I'll be forwarding you my report out to you so you don't have to take notes. And all this information is gonna be, is in my report. So moving on to the next thing was the, and I'm gonna share my screen with everybody, is the SU calendar. Let me just call it up and share the screen. So there were some significant changes to the calendar this year, and I'm just gonna, why can I find it? Call it up. So, um, SU calendar changes. The changes that we've made, the major changes, I should say, I'm just gonna go through all of them so you know, like I said, this is in the report so you can actually see the difference between last year's calendar and this year's calendar. The changes that have been made are changes that are required in the state statute, one oh seven one. The statute states that we need to have a uniformed regional calendar. This calendar shall include student attendance days, periods of vacation, holidays, teacher in-service, education days shall comply with subsections unless permitted by the secretary. No area served by the region, no area served by a regional career technical center shall be divided into two or more calendar regions. This is where Wyndham Northeast is unique because we have two technical centers that we work with, and those are the River Valley Tech Center and the Wynden Regional Career Center. And so over the past few years, what we found is that we did not have a common regional calendar. We, as most of you know, we had some SUs such as Bradabaro and, and other areas had like April vacation and February vacation the week after we did. And so with everything that we're charged to as a regional superintendents association is that there's where these major changes come from this year. Myself and Scott Farr, we held off as long as we could in these changes, but we succumbed to the rest of the group and we could only hold out so long. So this is what the changes look like. The first day of school last, last year was September eighth. There's really no changes. It's after Labor Day. This year it's gonna be September seventh. No change to the December recess. That's gonna remain as it has been. So these are the two big changes. February recess. Last year it was the third week in February, and that means it was the fifteenth through the nineteenth. The change is for next year's calendar is gonna be, it's gonna be the fourth week, twenty-first to the twenty-fifth. So that's the first major change. The other one, I'm sure you can see coming, is gonna be the April recess. In prior years, we had the third week, which was the twelfth to the sixteenth. And now, just like in the February, we'll move into the fourth week, which is the eighteenth to twenty-second. And that aligns us with the rest of the region now where before we weren't. And one of the struggles we were having particularly was around the career centers. And the issue was, is that when we weren't in session for school, the Wyndham Regional Career Center was in session. So what was happening is our kids earned the right to have some time off during their spring and winter recess would have to go to.
No, and I'm in the middle of a meeting.
Can we have, if we could, please, I'll just make sure we move.
For us, please?
So the problem that we ran into is students, when they were supposed to be on vacation in our SU would have to attend classes at the career center. And then, so, so they really never got that break. So that was the changes behind the calendar this year. You know, it's, it's one of those things, like I said, we held off as long as we could. But, you know, by state statute, we really had to have a regional calendar that worked for everybody. And working with two career centers, it was important for me to, to do everything we could to make sure our students were accessing both of those career centers, but also that they they weren't working over their vacation days, especially during this past year. So those are the changes for the, for the SU calendar. I can't see any changes coming in the near future now that we have a regional calendar that's set. And hopefully, this will also impact a lot of employees and parents who have students going to other surrounding SUs now that we have a common regional calendar. So moving right along, he's got some great news. Just came out yesterday is that Bellas Falls Union High School was once again ranked in the, as one of the top-ranked schools in US, in the US News report. And that means out of twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-three high schools in the nation, Bradabaro Uni High School ranked four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five. Out of the fifty-seven high schools in Vermont, Bradabaro, Bellas Falls Union High School ranked fifteen out of fifty-seven high schools. So once again, we're very pleased to, to make that announcement. I believe it was also last year as well. And if you want more information on that, I put the link in my newsletter. It's also on the Facebook page. And you can access at the bottom of the webpage, my newsletter, what gives you that direct link. Some of the things that they looked at, where they call it the scorecard, was they say twenty-five percent of the students took at least one AP exam. Seventeen percent of students passed at least one AP exam. Thirty-four percent were mathematics proficient. Sixty-one percent students were reading proficient, with had reading proficiencies and eighty-nine percent graduation rate. So I just want to congratulate all the faculty, staff, administration for all the hard work making that US News list once again. Next up is just a recovery plan update. And I know that we'll report out later on, but I just wanted to give everyone a good understanding of, you know, what have we been doing? The recovery plan is, is the plan that we have to create in order to spend that ESSR money that was awarded to us, talking about ESSR two money, which is part of the ESSR one, two, and three money. So we're on the ESSR two part of it. So we had our first meeting with the state on April first of twenty-twenty-one. The meeting, meaning the administrator, myself and my administrative team to talk about the process of creating that recovery plan. This was a two-hour training that, like I said, myself and high school administrators attended, spoke. The state spoke and learned about, we learned about the data literacy assessment and assessment literacy and the continuous improvement plan. The, so the recovery plan for this year is taking the place of the continuous improvement plan, the SIP plan that we've talked about so much in the past. And so on April twenty-seventh, I met with the teachers and my admin team as part of the recovery team to discuss the process and next steps. Dr. Carrot and I then met tonight, prior to this meeting, with the board SIP and recovery team meeting, committee members to go over the, the process and the detailed next steps. We'll have a joint meeting on May eleventh to bring all the subcommittees together with all members of the recovery team. The purpose of the second meeting will be to start looking at and creating the goals, the strategies that are needed to address the problems of practice that we have to send off to the state. So I believe, you know, the recovery team right now, we've broken into subcategories because it's really difficult, especially through Zoom. We can't meet in person. We have over, you know, thirty-three plus people on this recovery team. We have board members, teachers, parents, a community member, administration, teachers. I mean, so we, we really have a well-staffed recovery team representing, you know, all parties. So I will keep you updated on that status there. Right now, originally, we had, I think, six point, a little over six point eight million dollars in ESSR two money. And the last week, beginning of this week, they made some revisions to that, they meeting the state. And it went down a little bit, but was still around five point six million, I believe, for the ESSR two money. And that's what that committee, the, the recovery team is all about. I guess you would compare it to, to recall that we really couldn't spend Title I money unless it was reflected in our SIP. Well, we really can't spend the ESSR two money unless it's outlined in our recovery plan. You know, so that's one way to look at it. I, I kind of compare it to a SIP plan on steroids. So that's the recovery plan, ESSR two spending plan update. Some information I just added to my report today was contract extensions. As of right now, like I said, you don't have to write this down. I'm gonna send it all to you so you have it. The supervisor union has one request. Bellas Falls Union High School has two. Middle School has five. Central Elementary School has one. Saxon's Rilla Elementary, Saxon's River Elementary School has one for a total of, right now, ten contract extensions. And if you remember, in the, in the CBA, they can ask for a contract extension as long as they provide me with documentation that they're currently in the process, in due process of they have applied to other places. Got that documentation and work with Jill Ellen on that and the human resources offices. So we are following the CBA. But right now, we have ten employees. Some of the other data that I thought, you know, it was important for the, the board to have this time of year with everything going on is looking at turnover for staff.
Chris, I want to stop this a moment. Can you pull down your school calendar screen? Because I don't think we need that any longer. Be helpful for me to be able to see my board members. Sorry to interrupt you. Please pray, continue.
Yeah, now I just gotta get my screen back up.
Sorry, Chris.
Nope, not at all. All right, so here we go. Nope, not at all. Alright, so here we go. So we can see everyone now, David?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So um, these numbers we just, you know, we're breaking down today. It's not numbers that I presented before, but with everything we have going on, I think it was important for the board to, to have this information. And I did share some of this information with the negotiations committee. I'm not saying that it's tied to negotiations, but this is what we have right now. So right now, as, as of resignations, as people moving on to, to other jobs, they're not retiring. We have the S U office as eight, and that's made up of um, Paris, special ed teacher, title one. A title one person is actually the one retired we have in food services. Um, at the high school, we have two resignations, no one retiring. Central Elementary, we have one of each, one resignation. And one teacher retiring. Saxons River, we don't have any uh, for resignation or retiring. The middle school, we have two resignations and one retire. And Westminster Central, we have two resignations and one retire. So that's a total of fifteen resignations and four retires compared to last year. And last year it was really tough because we did. We tracked it, but you know, wanted to get this information for all of you tonight. So what we have right now is. Last year, we had a total of. Two teachers and four pairs. That um, resigned. I know we, I didn't have a chance to really look at the retirements from last year, but you can see the numbers are definitely up. Or had six last year, fifteen this year resignations, and I did not include all the, the rifts that were made last year for Paris. So. Um, whatever reason, um, I am conduct to having the H R office conduct exit interviews to hopefully give us some information to find out why these people have decided to move on to go other places. So hopefully that'll give me some information to really dig through and find out, you know, what can we do better or, or what was the reason behind um, you know, fifteen people so far. Other ways. I don't wanna make any assumptions right now. That's why we're having the um, exit interviews and they're, they're starting tomorrow. So stay tuned for more on that. Okay, we're almost done. We only got two more things. Um, so enrollment numbers. Bellas Falls Middle School, this is as of four twenty-eight, has two hundred and thirty-one. And that includes, and all these number include remote learners, whether they're in school, they're still going. So we have the middle school has two hundred and thirty-one students. The high school has three hundred and eleven. Central Elementary has one hundred and thirty-one. Grafton Elementary, Athens Grafton have sixty-four. Saxons River has seventy-seven. And Westminster Central has a hundred and fifty-two. So. The last thing I have is just the update on what some of the program, student service programs changes for next year. So the intensive need classroom at Central Elementary School will be relocating to the Westminster Central School. It'll also be referred to as the life skills classroom. We believe that the benefits of having students stay in the classroom through grade six is really important for stability and growth. Additionally, the middle school's life skills classroom will relocate to the high school. So students will be able to access the um, this classroom starting in grade seven. This will also allow for only one transition in support consistency in the programming and curriculum. So we're trying to align that more. And so. With that said. That's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Chris, can we back up just a minute? Um, under reports, I'm aware of the fact we also have business manager on here. Uh, master plan inclusive of select board meeting dates. Um, just, just very broadly speaking, where are we uh, progress wise with a master plan that include such things as? Uh, you know, budget dates and other um, uh, other dates that are important, such as having um, warnings done timely and things of that nature. Um, can you tell us roughly where we are in terms of creating that uh, master calendar?
Absolutely. I didn't put it in my report, but um, I've been working with Nicole. And so what we're, what we have right now. Is um. We have a master calendar. Let's see. Okay, so this is a sample. This is what it's gonna look like. And what David means by the master calendars, like we're trying to put a calendar together that has everything from, you know, all the events. On to one calendar. And what we're looking at now is breaking it up. By color code and having a box meeting. Everything in blue would be S U meetings. Everything in green would be elementary board meetings. Town meetings would be in orange. If I can just get the scroll to work. But we've been trying to find the best, the easiest way to kinda. Put everything on the one calendar. Right now, this is where we are, but this is kind of what it's gonna look like. Okay, there you go. So. It's color coded for everybody. And so we might have one like this, but we might go further and create one that's just month by month. But we're hoping to have everything, we have um, town select board meetings on there. High school board meetings. We want to have um, dates such as town meeting days. We wanna have dates of when um, reports are due to the printers. So everyone's on the same page. So this is an encompass all in one calendar that has been requested by the board for um, my office to do. Um, so um, we have been working on it. Nicole's been great. We've been bouncing ideas off of each other. But what I would like to ask is that. Any important dates that, even if it's already on this calendar, any important dates that um, board members feel that they want on that calendar, if you could send them to David. Clark, and then he can forward them on to us. That would be great because we don't wanna miss anything. And um. We know there is a lot of important things that we wanna know about in the year, but we don't want it the last minute again. One of the things I want, I said I wanted to have on there is when would things need to go to print? Um, because we don't wanna go against the deadline. So please send anything that you feel you would like on a master calendar for the board. Send it to David. David will send it to us and we'll continue to put something together and hopefully we can find something that's not too confusing. But we're all gonna be on the same page, knowing important dates, time um, stamps and everything on there. So that's where we are with the master calendar.
Thank you, Chris. I do see a hand up from uh, George. So George.
Hi, thank you. Um, so that, that's great. The master calendar is awesome. Um, is that something that in the, uh, the constituent board chairs would be um? Justified in sending you um, or, 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 or adding to um. Uh, certain dates that we wanna um, look at long-term goals um, by such and such date, or. It, it, or is it, or is it just through the S U uh, portion? I feel like it could be really utilized on the individual board level as well. That's why I ask.
Yeah, right now we're focusing on all the major dates. You know, um, that, you know. Negotiations, when we should start negotiations, if we're up for negotiations year, you know, when we need to have teacher contracts signed by, you know, all the things that. It's all the stuff that's in common throughout the S U that, that we need to do at the S U level. That doesn't mean that. A board couldn't come up with their own in regards to certain dates. Um, you know, in my. Former S U board set up a calendar of different topics they want presented at each board meeting. They shared that with the admin, worked with the administration on that. So each month you knew. You know, what presentation was gonna take place at the board meeting, whether it's a student presentation or staff presentation. So that's something that can be created at each board level. And it's something I would encourage that we do, especially, you know, if we're really focusing on student learning and all the stuff where we've been talking about with the recovery plan. So it can stem off to the local boards, George. We're starting off with the S U, and then once the S U ones created, you know, maybe it can be adjusted. Each board can adjust it to what they need.
Question asked, George?
So just a quick follow-up. So, so would that be all? Would this master calendar encompass all of that? Or would there be additional calendars? Uh, from the constituent boards? I, I kind of feel, feel like I like the idea of a, of a master calendar. That way even other board. Uh, boards know what's going on uh, with their um. With their um, um, neighboring towns. Um. So would that, when, what you just said, would that be a um? Part of this master calendar, or would it be, you know, each board have their own individual?
I mean, again, I guess it all depends how much we can fit on one calendar, you know. So I would say um. It's, it's send, send, if you have ideas, send it to David. David will send it to, to me and we'll, Nicole and I will see what we can come up with. And if we can do it, yeah, we'll do it. If not, then we'll break it down into, you know, hybrid of each individual board. Sure, everyone gets copies of it. But let's try putting it all on one calendar at first. We know when each town has their own select board meetings. You know. There's a lot going on one calendar. It's just, I think the, 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 what the problem we're having is trying to get it on one calendar that doesn't. Want your brain to explode because there's so much on it. But it's, it's worth a shot.
Yeah, yeah, just my, my thought is it's uh, it's easier to look in one, one place rather than three, four, or five places. So and either way, however it pans out, I think it's great. So thanks.
The chair recognizes Jack Brier.
Hi, I, I blew up uh, during this discussion for some reason. So I'm coming back on. I just wanna follow George's point, which I think is a good one, which is that. Individual boards and this board as an entity uh, really need to be thinking about setting in place uh, benchmarks and timelines. So that there is a benchmark that says, by gosh, we will have a retreat by date X. We will have a budget by date X. We will begin. Budget discussions by date X and get those things into place. If only as a goat, because as, as uh, as you noted, Mr. Chair, last year was a bit of a car crash in terms of stuff. All coming in a little late and uh, deliberation was uh, compromised. I think everyone will agree by the. Sort of rush to hit the deadlines because we were already past due. Um, with that, I'm good.
Thank you. Any other questions for uh, uh, Superintendent Chris Pratt before we move on? Is that a question, Priscilla? You're right.
Yes, um, do we need to vote on the calendar to approve it? Uh, if, if we do, I need to comment on it. If not, I will send a note to you and Chris.
I'm gonna respond to uh, Priscilla and tell you that a school calendar is actually an administrative prerogative. Having said that, yes, I would appreciate if you would forward comment because. We'd like to know what board members are thinking.
Do you want me to just go ahead? Um.
If you'd like to, I think this would be a great time. Priscilla, we're all here.
You need to look at the number of days. We're short a day. Um, by moving the teacher in-service day to the twenty-eighth of February, it cut back fourteen days, which means you need another day at the end of the year.
I'll double check with the union again because I had their, I gave it to them already. They looked at it. Refuted it, okayed it, but um, we'll take another look at it. Thank you, Priscilla.
I just counted days.
Okay, uh, Chris, anything else uh, before we backtrack to uh, uh, business office?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Flora, um, I greatly appreciate your uh, patience here. You were kind of sandwiched in, nor, you were supposed to be. In the middle of Chris's reports here, but by golly, once he got the bit in his mouth, he ran with it. So it's uh, your turn. Thank you.
Well, I am kind of in the mid of his report because we provided the H R information to him. Um. So, um, starting with that, each of our um. Employees had something to report. So H R um, reported that um, she will be. Um, implementing um, a new procedure for the employees, um, new higher employees and exit employees. Uh, for the new higher employees, um, she has uh, a package that she's putting together. With documents, so everything is um, set and we could do um, paperless. As well for the um, exiting employees, we are implementing um, an exit interview system. So it could just help us to improve our processes. Um, as well, she does have created, and this is an update as things that um, each of the areas have overcome for the past. Couple of months. Um, I haven't been here so long, but it's good for you guys to understand how much we have accomplished in the past eight months. So H R has um, now an access list with all the employees' benefits information and payroll. As well, it has a message um, sheet with all of the staff information, which it helps us to have backup information from E finance. And we have recreated all of the H R and payroll benefits um, documents such as nine forty-one's. W H four thirty-six and um, as well, we are up to date on the Department of Labor submission of documents. Which it was something that um. Because we were like shorter staff and the change of staff was put in the back burner, but we are actually all caught up with that. Um, for payroll, um, I have to say kudos to um, our newbie. He has accomplished, I think, the most of all of us. So payroll is definitely being done in a timely manner. Um, we usually have payroll finished by a Wednesday. Um, I don't know if you guys have heard, but you know, we try to submit payroll for employees. No later than Thursday, even though the due date that we have is Friday. But um, you know, I know how important it is for employees to receive their paychecks on time. Um, as well, we updated and corrected all the information in the finance. We did had a lot of issues passed with um, rates. And um, hiring information that was not put in the system correctly. So all of those things were corrected. Uh, we as well have now two employees strain and payroll. So that way we have a backup employee. We created as well a step-by-step guide. Uh, for processing payrolls from start to finish. So in case we don't have that second backup, any of us is able to maybe pick up that book and um. Complete payroll, including me. And we did as well created a separate electronic timesheet for transportations in Paris. So that way it makes it easier for us to um, at the end of the year, submit every um, federal fund that hourly employee. Information and that way we could be in compliance. As for the accomplishments of the finance department and um, accounting area. So um, we have um. Updated all of our general entries. Um, we corrected every errors that we had in the payroll um, aspect. As well, um, grants, we updated grants information that we had. Um, submitted and corrected all the grants and documents that needed to be um, done by the end of the year. Uh, we created um, new funds and codes for the new grants that we have, which is S R and on the C R R F grants. And we um, completed this year um, audits. Um, before time, I guess, because compared to last year. This year auditors were in and out in two weeks and our audit documents were given to us by January already. So that was something um, really big that. The department did accomplish and worked together really hard to make that happen. And um. For A P, um, we have three employees now cross-trained for A P. Um, Marlene was able to take vacation time. Well, the surf for her, um, she has given the S U a lot of years. She did deserve that little time that she took off and this time she didn't even call. So um, P O's is approved daily. Um, as well, our days in A P's are down to fifteen days. We are processing um. And voices as we receive them, we're cutting checks with every um, payroll, which it means bi-weekly. And um. We are sending our warrants um, bi-weekly as well. Um, hopefully you guys are getting them. Um, we do have an issue with Panda Dog, but it's because um, we utilize um, the Panda Duck license that is free. And well, that has um. A little. Hold on in the system. I'm not sure why sometimes some of you guys do get the warrant, sometimes you don't. Sometimes you guys say that you did sign it, but it doesn't come to us. But um, that is a process that we are working with um, Ricky as well, and we're gonna look more into it to see what can we do with that. As for um, the business manager, um. I don't know, what can I say that you guys don't know, right? We, I believe that um, our employee relations in the office have um, changed a lot. As well as the relationship that the business office have now with um, all the staff and teachers. We are more open and communicative. We are more uh, pro the staff. Um, we did review and updated purchasing policies. Uh, we did merge um, bank accounts. Um, we did automatic um, system payments for flex spendings. That actually um, helps a lot of the employees with their um, benefits. We had a lot of employees um, that they were paying for their benefits and they were looking at their accounts. It wasn't up to date. So we've been um, looking into that. Uh, we got in direct cost approval. This year we submit um, in direct cost on time. Um, we did update um, charts of accounts. Currently, we are working with um, the state and E finance and. Some changes that the um, state have implemented in codes. Um, how this affect us, um. Hopefully we could provide a budget. That will be easier to understand. Um, but all of our calls have changed. Um, the calls that we had in the budget that was appropriate by twenty-two. All of those calls will be changed as well. This um, affects um, pay. as well this affect payroll as well. The way that our employees are coded in the system, that is going to change as well. But we work in step-by-step with the finance. We have only pay, four payrolls left for the year. But I am sure that we're going to be up to speed with everything. Jason is working already on the last payroll of the year as well. So everybody could get their pace how they're supposed to and will minimize errors. But, you know, we're not perfect, but we will try our best to finish the year strong. And I think we could keep going all night. But we have accomplished a lot and I am really proud of every single staff. They all work really hard and we all work really good together. We are a family and not a team. We, we work all, we are different, but we just have a good grip to each other. That's for us.
Questions from the board? Jack Brier and then Cheryl Charles, I believe.
Yeah, I just want to make certain that, that Flora has, you know, her own list of things that she may be interested in having this potential finance assistance group help with. And I want to make certain that, and, and some of that may be, please leave us alone. But in case there are actual areas where she'd like the assistance, just to make sure that she asks for it. Secondly, in the, in the broader reports that we have, one of the things that I keep forgetting to ask you is, at some point, I'd love to have a tag in our spreadsheets showing the origin of the money. And the reason for that is there are some monies that people may circle as, gee, why are we spending this money? But if the money is, is dedicated via third-party grant, that's one thing. When it's coming out of tax receipts is another thing entirely. And that works both ways when receipts come in, that we identify all the, all the receipts, you know, all these sources of income and that we are able to identify which of those are for discretionary use and which of those are dedicated. I, I used to have a lot of As, Bs and Cs on our spreadsheets in my office and for that specific way of, you know, specific reason. So if we can, people can see, you know, where it's coming from and where it's going to. I think that would be a, a useful thing. And probably one more thing e-finance doesn't know how to do or the Cognos people don't, but it'd still be helpful.
Yes.
Comment to Jack. So the way that we have split everything that has to do with grants, especially with the ESSER grants, and that was something that I did mention that we did create was the funds coding. So I guess the state has changed a lot for everything. There is a code. So a way to make it easier for you guys, it might be maybe running a, a report that has to do with all the grants expenses, which is something that I did work already. But Leslie, it will help as well Dr. Kerry, so she can manage and know where she is and her expenses with all the grants. But like I said this morning, I did, had an email with Leslie from e-finance and she is gonna work on putting together a report that is gonna go to you guys bi-weekly, the same time, the same way that you get all the other reports. But this will be specifically for grants. That way you can see what we have been getting in grants and how it's being spent. We have that one already.
I, I think you need that in order to do an integrated spreadsheet. But I think, I think both would be useful. I think that being able to break it out would be helpful. But I, I think that sometimes it's, it's very easy to get lost in the weeds of not being able to just sort of see the big picture. I think a lot of, you know, occasional questions and maybe unfriendly questions come from the fact that people can't figure out where the money's coming from or what the money has to be spent on. And that would be, that would be helpful during the Q and A of both our regular finance reports and particularly towards budget time.
Okay.
Did you have a hand up, Cheryl?
I actually didn't, but I'll take this opportunity to commend Flora for that very nice summary of the many, many things you and the family there, the, the staff have accomplished. So thank you very much.
Priscilla, do I have a sense of a hand, Priscilla? Okay, fine. Flora, I cannot tell you why, but I'm reminded of a Sherlock Holmes story called The Mystery of the Dog That Didn't Bark. One of the most noticeable things, at least from my perspective as a board member, is the complete lack of drama, which has been coming out of the business office and the finance operation these days. It is such a welcome change from some of the pandemonium, which unfortunately we were experiencing even as recently as this time last year. So I don't think there's a member of this board who doesn't appreciate the huge effort that's gone into cleaning up the business office and finance operation. And I certainly want to say, I for one appreciate your effort. And I hope that your superintendent treats you really well because you should. Thank you. Thank you so much for, for your hard work and let, let your team and your family know that it's greatly appreciated. I'm looking here down the list and it actually appears to me that we are at director's comments. And I am going to ask for director's comments. I guess I'll, I'll go around the boards again. I think I'll start actually with Jack since you're a director. What about comment, Jack?
Just again, a thank you to, to Flora for the work that she has done because I too agree that while there are many things we need to do there, so much that's been done compared to where things were a year, a year and a half ago that, well, there really is no comparison because this is functional and I like that. So my thanks.
Cheryl, Charles?
I'd, I'd like to thank Chris Pratt for his citing of Chris Hodgson's letter. I, I just want to say that this community has suffered a great loss with the death of Jada Spalding Doyle. And, and to echo what Chris said, that we all need to support one another, the students who knew her well, the family and friends all involved. So on behalf, I'm sure of all of us, it is our sincere condolences and heartfelt sadness at this great loss.
Thank you, Cheryl. Lynn Morgan?
I just wanted to thank Chris and Flora for both of their reports. There was a lot of information there and it was very informative and understandable. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Jessica West Clark?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Priscilla Lambert?
Yes, Cheryl, thank you so much for those words for Jada. I also wanted to recognize the passing of Mary Jane Bosworth, a very longtime music teacher in our elementary schools who passed away Monday night. I want to remember her dedication and service and send prayers and condolences to her family.
Thank you, Priscilla. George Smith?
Yeah, thank you. You backing on Cheryl's and Priscilla's comments. And as a relative of students who are really close with, with Jada, thank you for that report and Chris and prayers for, for you kids out there muscling through this, this troublesome time. So, you know, best to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Jason Terry?
I do not have any, David. Thank you.
Brenda Farkas?
I just want to also join with the, giving thanks to Flora and her team for the work that they've done to acknowledge it and thank you for that.
Deb Wright?
Well, the only thing I can say is that we never know how small our community actually is until something horrible happens, no matter what we do with our days as we wander about and try to make the best of the seeing the light at the end of the pandemic tunnel. We realize how close we are when we all feel the earth shake because of something like that. So, so my heart goes out to all the people who are, who have suffered and who will continue to do so after this recent tragedy, both with the teacher and with a critical accident death. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. My comment here is I'm going to note that under those bylaws, which I, WNESU bylaws, which I cited at the beginning of the meeting, it indicates that we have a 15-member quorum based on a, on five boards. The previous two years, we suspended the rules to allow for a nine-member quorum. It seems very likely that Westminster will become an independent district sooner rather than later. So I'm just going to mention to the WNESU board that at some point in the near future, I'm going to get with Chris Pratt and ask if we can get some advice from this, the district's attorney, Pietro Lynn, as to how the bylaws for the WNESU board should reflect the voting. So it's been on my mind and I wanted to let board members know that it's something that maybe sooner or later we're going to have to address. Before we get to data of next meeting, I'm going to ask the boards leave here to ask for just a moment of silence in memory of Jada Spalding Doyle and Mary Jane Bosworth. Thank you all. According to my calendar, the date of the next supervisor union meeting will be Wednesday, May 26. I would also now like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for negotiations update. Can I have a motion, please? George has the motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from Lynn. Okay, then. I'll roll call it. Deb Wright, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brenda Farkas?
Aye.
Jason Terry?
Aye.
Priscilla Lambert?
Aye.
George Smith?
Aye.
Cheryl Charles?
Aye.
Lynn Morgan?
Aye.
Jessica West Clark. And as a point of clarification, unless any of the voting members object, I'm going to presume that that motion includes administration. Okay, good.